Alright, time for a little more modern physics. Part two here. If you haven't watched part one, I'd recommend going back and doing that first. Part one deals with the electron cloud. Some physics of what the electrons are doing. Now we go down into the nucleus here. Alright. And we'll start here with a very, very tiny chemistry review. Alright. And just on symbols a little bit here. Okay? So what do these things mean? This is the element symbol. Alright, periodic table. And this is the number of protons. This here is the mass number. Okay? And the mass number is your protons plus your neutrons. Alright, total number of nucleons, we might say. Alright, so that's gonna help us get into nuclear reactions. And we're gonna talk about three types of nuclear decay here. And those would be alpha, beta, and gamma. Once we talk about alpha, beta, and gamma decay, we are going to get into E equals delta mc squared. Alright, maybe the most famous of all physics equations. Okay, so we'll start with alpha decay. Alpha decay is when the nucleus emits an alpha particle. Okay? And an alpha particle is a helium nucleus. It's got a symbol. And it looks like that. And the helium nucleus has a mass number of four. And an atomic number of two. So protons, I don't know if I said this. We'll put this here too, atomic number. Alright, and the difference between an alpha particle and actual helium, if we did this. This has its electron cloud. Okay? Its two electrons are present if we write this. This does not have the two electrons. So it's actually got a positive two charge because it's unbalanced by two. Okay, so let's look at this. Really big elements undergo nuclear decay. At least alpha decay usually is bigger elements. So let's say we got U238. And it's gonna undergo alpha decay. What element is created? So what we're gonna do here as we go through these, we're gonna do three examples of nuclear reactions. So in chemistry, you might have done some chemical reactions, but you probably didn't do any nuclear reactions yet. So here's what we do. We put what we start with on the left side. We call that the products. And we've got 238 and 92. Okay? So what that means is uranium, and I got this off the periodic table. Uranium has 92 protons. Alright? And that's what makes it uranium, by the way. If it goes up or down even one proton, it is no longer uranium. It is a different element. Okay? And then the 238 would be the protons plus the neutrons. Okay? Now, in AP Physics 2, you are not gonna have to use the periodic table. So this information would be given to you. You don't have a periodic table during the test. It's not anywhere on your constants page. There's some information like the mass of one proton and one neutron that is on there. Okay? And we will use some of this stuff right here. Mass of an electron's on there. But you do not have to memorize anything off the periodic table, know any element symbols. You just have to know what these numbers mean and some basic things about how they are conserved as we go through this. Okay, so products. And then an arrow indicates that a reaction happened. Okay, so we wanna know what element is created. And yes, we would have to have a periodic table for this. You know, to figure out the symbol and all of that. And that's okay for our examples here. I'll just tell them to you. But just know that you wouldn't have to know that on the exam. Okay, so I'm gonna leave a big space here. And I'm gonna put over here that an alpha particle's gonna come off. And we're gonna just assume it's one alpha particle for this decay. And here's the deal. Our mass, our total number of mass, our nucleons, has to be conserved. Okay, so we had 238. Four went to the alpha particle, so pretty simple. What's left over is 234. But that is not gonna tell us what element is created. Okay? Because there are things called isotopes. Isotopes, for example, I could have uranium-237, which would still be 92, but it would be 237 for the mass number. So it'd be down a neutron. Okay, anyway, back to this. We had 92. We lost two to the alpha particle, so we have 90 here. And if you look up the element with 90 protons, that's gonna be thorium. Okay, so we'll put that symbol. And that's the new element that's created. Okay, now the big thing you have to know for these types of problems is again, the mass number is conserved. Okay? And then in this example with our alpha particle, okay, we had 92. Check this out. We've got 92 down here still for our protons. Okay? Alright, now let's look at beta particles. Beta particles are a little bit more complicated because we can have beta positive and beta negative decay. Okay, so definition. The nucleus emits either a positron or an electron. Okay? So we use this symbol, beta positive. Beta negative. And those you do kinda need to know. You need to know what those symbols mean. Mass stays the same. Okay, so the mass after the decay is gonna stay the same. Alright, so the positron. When that happens, we have beta positive decay. And so we'll divide this up into two parts. So over here, let's do the positive, beta negative. Alright, and we'll just do an example for each. So let's say we have some neon. Neon does undergo, an isotope of neon does undergo beta positive decay. So neon-19 has got 19 nucleons. And 10 of those must be protons, or it would not be neon. Okay, and then over here, I'm gonna put E positive. Okay, that is another way to indicate a beta particle. A positron. So where did that come from? Is the key thing we need to know here. And here's what's happening. The proton, one of the protons in the nucleus is actually giving up its charge and turning into a neutron. Okay, so the protons, it's like it's giving away its positive charge, but it's not giving away a whole proton. Okay, so this is just the same mass as an electron. It's called a positron. Alright, so I'll put an arrow there. That's positron. Okay, so if a proton is going away, then I have to change this 10 down to a 9. Alright? Now, the mass is going to stay the same. So up here. Whoops, this is still gonna be 19, not 10. Okay, that's gonna be 19. And now, if we looked on the periodic table, we have fluorine instead. Okay, so that's an example of beta positive decay. Okay, beta negative. Let's take a look at this one. Good example is carbon-14. Okay, carbon's got six protons. And what's gonna happen is we are going to give up an electron. Okay, but it is not an electron from the electron cloud. Okay, here's what's happening. The electron is still coming from the nucleus, which is completely weird. Because where are their negative charges in the nucleus? Okay? Well, a neutron is actually a proton fused with an electron. Okay? So if that neutron gives up the electron, that neutron becomes a proton. So what happens is instead of having an atomic number of six, we actually go up an atomic number instead of going down. So we now have seven, which is nitrogen. And the mass number is gonna stay the same. Okay, and we're gonna get this electron flying off. Okay, so that's big beta negative decay. And there's also a side note, a neutrino also comes off. Alright, which is tiny, tiny mass and no charge. So there's some other little details that go along with these. We are barely scratching the surface of nuclear reactions as we go through. But we are learning the basic rules, which is kind of a cool start. Gamma decay. Okay, we've talked about gamma radiation when we talked about the electromagnetic spectrum. And it is high, high energy photons. Okay? Very high energy photons. And they're coming from the nucleus. No charge, no mass associated with these. Okay, but here's what's happening. Let's say we got U238. Okay? And sometimes you'll see a star next to the element. Okay, and what's happened here is the nucleus is charged up to an energy level. Okay, the nucleus has been hit by something or bombarded by something, and it is at a higher energy level itself. So we talked about how, when we did the electrons, when we did the energy levels for electrons, we talked about how they can go up and down energy states. Okay, well nuclei can do the same thing. So when this is at a high energy level and it has to release that energy, it can release gamma radiation. Okay, so we just copy down uranium again. And we put the sign for gamma radiation, which looks like that. Okay? And the photon carries a bunch of energy and momentum. Okay, we talked about that. De Broglie wavelengths and all of that in the last segment. So the nucleus is going to recoil, and this energy's gonna be given off. Those three are our three types of radiation that we need to know about. Okay, and we'll encounter some other details with that when we do some multiple choice. This does mostly show up in multiple choice questions. And we'll talk about how to deal with those situations as we go through them. In all three of these reactions, energy is also released. So off to the right of these, we could also put plus energy, plus energy, plus energy. Okay? Now where does that energy come from? E equals delta mc squared. Okay? Now remember back in Physics 1 where your teacher said, hey, F does not equal ma. Okay, F net equals ma. Alright, and it's not just a picky little detail. We can't just take any force and say, oh, set it equal to ma. We have to have the net force. Okay? Here, E does not equal mc squared. E equals delta mc squared. Okay? So here's what it means. In any of these reactions, take the mass that seems to be missing in kilograms and multiply by c squared to figure out how many joules of energy were released. Okay, now mass that seems to be missing, what the heck does that mean? Here's the deal. Mass before decay is slightly greater than after the decay. And this mass goes into energy. Okay, now why? That gets into binding energy. And where Einstein came up with all of this and different things that we're not gonna get into in this video. Your teacher probably went into a lot more detail when you learn this in class. But we're not gonna get into it in the review session here. Okay, so the mass that seems to be missing, it's pretty easy, the problems we have to do with this. We just need to be able to look at the reactants and how much they weigh. Look at the products and how much they weigh. And figure out the difference. Okay? So we'll do an example here. And you probably wouldn't be asked to do this mathematical of an example on a Physics 2 test. But I think if we can do this, it'll help us understand what's going on at a basic level so we can do the harder, more conceptual questions. Okay, so this is actually a fusion reaction. And here we've got a bunch of little deuteriums. Okay? And deuteriums are hydrogen's. But check it out. They've got a neutron. Okay, so usually hydrogen is just a proton and an electron. But these have actually got a neutron as well. And so what happens is these fuse together. And we get helium. And we get a hydrogen. And we get a neutron. Okay? So for nuclear reactions to give energy, here's what has to always be true, whether it is fusion or fission. This must be heavier. This must be lighter. And if that is not true, we will not get energy from the nuclear reaction. Okay? It would take energy, as a matter of fact. Determine the mass defect of a single reaction given the following info. Okay, so really, this is an exercise in adding. Okay, how easy is that? Let's look at the reactants first. Okay, so reactants, we just need to add them together. We've got three deuteriums. And we're gonna use AMU to add these up for now. So we've got three 2.0141s. And if you multiply that, you are going to get 6.0423 atomic mass units. Alright? Now you notice on this chart, I gave you the masses in kilograms of the different subatomic particles. Okay, over here, they're in atomic mass units or u is what we write after. Okay, so we can be working in either. Okay, now let's look at the products. And we will simply add all of those up. For the products, we've got a helium. So that is 4.0026 plus a hydrogen, 1.0078, plus a neutron, 1.0087. And if we add those up, we get 6.0191. Okay? And you can see that the products are in fact lighter than the reactants. Okay, so when this happened, mass was actually lost. Alright, kind of a weird concept. That mass actually got converted into energy. Okay, so let's find the delta m. Delta m is going to be the heavier one minus the lighter one. And we get 0.0232. Okay? Alright, now we're gonna figure out the energy in joules released during the fusion reaction. Okay, so we're gonna use this. Alright, now when we use this, just like any time we're using mass, it's gotta be in kilograms. Okay, and then that's just the speed of light. So we need to do a conversion real quick. So we'll take our 0.0232 AMU. And we'll convert it to kilograms. So we wanna say how many kilograms are in that many atomic mass units? So this is the unit we wanna cancel. We'll put it diagonal. This is the unit we wanna go to. And if we look this up on our constants page, one AMU is 1.66 times 10 to the negative 27th kilograms. Okay, so where did I get that? Well, I have it memorized. So where is it on here? Uh, right there. Alright? Okay, so if we punch that into our calculator, 3.85 times 10 to the negative 29th kilograms. Okay, so let's plug it into this equation. Our delta m is the number we just got. And c squared. We will get 3.47 times 10 to the negative 12th joules. Okay? Doesn't look like very much energy, and it's not. Okay? That's a tiny amount of joules. We couldn't really do anything with that. But we also have to remember that that is for just one fusion reaction. Okay? And we usually don't just have one. So multiplied many, many times, this gives lots of energy. Okay, this is what the sun does right here. Okay, next we are going to go on and do some multiple choice. So we will do these two together right here. And then I'll have you do the back on your own. These first two multiple choice, I picked because they're about half-life. Half-life is a brand-new thing on the Physics 2 test. And I actually have not seen one actual question on it yet. But since it's a new thing and teachers are kinda getting used to having it around, let's go over it with these two multiple choice questions. We have to know how to deal with it on graphs. And we have to know how to kinda be able to do a little bit of a calculation. So let's look at this first. The graph shows the decay of a sample of carbon-14 initially at N sub zero atoms. Which of the lettered points on the time axis could represent the half-life? Okay? These are very easy questions. Let's look at this. So we have N sub zero. Down here would be when there are none of them left. They are decaying and growing fewer and fewer as time goes by. Okay, now this right here is N sub zero over two. The point where there are only half of them left. So if I go over here and then I go down, that is the half-life. So the answer is A. Alright, very, very easy. Okay, now this question is maybe a little bit more complicated than what I think they are going to ask us. But if you know a little bit more than what you're gonna be tested on, that is always a good thing, right? So let's do this. It's kind of a longer example. And I'll do some, I'll teach you guys some stuff as we go through this one. Here's the deal. We're gonna do this using a table. We've got two samples of radioactive material. We've got sample A. And it's got a mass of 0.28 and a half-life of 10 days. Sample B, okay, we've got its mass and its half-life. Okay? And then it asks us during which of the following time periods will the two samples pass the moment where they have the same amount of material left? Okay? So the difficult thing is we have to deal with two materials at the same time. So sample A, we'll put a column. Sample B, put a column for that. And we're just gonna compare what is happening to these two as time goes by. So over here, I'm gonna add a time column. If you wanna do this on a sheet of notebook paper so you can study from it, this is a really good example here. Okay? Now, one of them counts half-lives by 10, and one of them counts half-lives by 15. So I'm gonna go by multiples of five on my time chart here. 0, 5, 10, 15, 20, 25, and so on. And I'm gonna go all the way out to time equals 50 days. Okay? So what the heck is a half-life anyway? Well, here's what it means. Do not make it harder than it is. It's very, very simple. It's the time for half of it to go away. Okay? So let's look at sample A only. A is the 0.28 with the 10 days. Okay? So at time equals 0, we have 0.28 grams. Okay? Then at 10 days, we are going to have not 0.28 anymore, but 0.14. Okay, let's jump another half-life. Now I'm using this. I've got 0.07. Let's jump another half-life. I've got 0.035. At 40, I'm gonna have 0.0175. Okay? And then from 40 to 50, 0.0175 divided by 2, 0.00875. Okay, and those are all in grams. So this is showing how much is left as we go up in time. Okay, sample B. Let's check that one out. Sample B has got 0.08 to start with. So we've got less of it. But it, um, its half-life is longer. It sticks around longer. So it's got a half-life this time of 15 days. So as I go through the chart here, I'm gonna count by 15s. So I've got 0.04 at 15 days. Let's go another half-life up to 30. And I've got 0.02. Okay? So here, I've still got more of sample A than I do of sample B. Okay? Let's go to 45 days. I've got 0.01 right here. Okay? And answer D right here says more than 40 days. Okay? So let's check out what's happening at 40 days. Okay? Cause we can see somewhere in here it's gonna pass. But there's a way for us to check and know at 40 days, did these things pass each other? Okay? So here's the equation. And I don't think you're going to be expected to actually use this equation on the AP Physics 2 test, but it might come in handy. Okay? A equals AO times one-half. And that is raised to the power of T over H. Okay? Now it looks kinda complicated, but it's very, very easy to use. Here's what it means. This is how much you have left at a certain time. This is how much you start with. Okay? This half is because it's a half-life. This is the time you wanna know about. Okay, now this equation, these times we wanna know about are multiples of the half-life. So they're very easy to deal with. Okay, but what if we wanna know for sample B at a time that's not a multiple of its half-life? Okay, or some weird day, what if we wanted to know what was going on on day thirty-one point five for sample B? Or even throw hours in there or something like that? That's when this equation becomes helpful. So that's the time we wanna know about, time gone by. And this. Is little H is the actual half-life. Okay? So let's do an example. For sample B. Okay, how many we have left is gonna be how much we start with, which is point oh eight. Alright, times a half. And that's a constant, that's what we always have there, raised to the power of T over H. Okay, so the time we would like to know about for sample B is forty days, and by the way, it doesn't matter what unit you are in. As long as your time and your half-life are in the same unit. And then H. The actual half-life. For this one is, we've been counting by fifteens. Okay, so let's punch that into our calculators. Alright, you can try it on yours. Point oh eight times point five raised to the power. Of parentheses forty divided by fifteen. Okay? I'm gonna punch it in like that. I'm gonna get point oh one two five nine. So right here. Point zero one two five nine. Okay? So you can see at forty days. This. This one is still not less than this one, so they haven't passed yet. So the answer is gonna be D. More than forty days. Okay, and I think even though I haven't seen them ask us a half-life que- um, question. I think that you're gonna be able to reason through them, just like this, using charts. Rather than having to use this equation. But if you kinda know a little bit more than that's on the test, that's a good. It's a good tool to have in your back pocket right here. So hopefully that helps you out with half-life. And as we get tested on it more, we will, we will know. Know more example questions to give you. Alright, here's what I want you to do. I would like you to pause and work the rest of the multiple choice questions on the next. Um, next two pages, okay, work the next set of multiple choice. Before we go over these. Little education on the nineties. Let's see what you got, name that ninety song. Ah, a personal favorite. Amazing song, just takes me back. Alright, let's see how these went. Um, two main things on this. Conservation of charge. And conservation of nucleon number. Okay, those two things must be true in these, so let's, let's go through each one and kinda learn more about that. Okay, so proton collides with this nitrogen, produces that and one other particle, what is that particle? Name that particle. So. We start out with a proton. So I'm gonna go like that. It's got a charge of one, it's got a mass of one. And it's gonna collide with something that has got this configuration. And that's given to us, notice we don't have to use the periodic table. That we're gonna get this, we're gonna get an eleven-six carbon, if you don't write this out, good luck getting this correct. You might be a lot smarter than me and be able to do it, but. Very difficult if you don't write these out. Okay? So first of all, our number of. Um, nucleons have to be conserved, so here I've got fifteen. Here I've got eleven, so I need something with four more nucleon. Okay, protons plus neutrons. Here I've got eight positives. Okay? So that means I have to have something with two more positives. So I've got a four and a two, that looks suspiciously like an alpha particle. Okay, so answer is D. Okay, next one. Um, do you know what tritium is? Thing is, you do not have to to get this right. Okay, it's actually an isotope of hydrogen. Um, but you don't really need to know that, you could call it capital T when you're doing the equation here. This is a beta decay problem. So. We've got, um. Three neutrons and a proton. Two neutrons and a proton. So that means that our mass number is three. And you might have figured out since it just has one proton that hey, it's hydrogen. Okay, don't let that throw you off. Okay, then it's gonna undergo beta decay. So on this side, we know. We are gonna get an electron. Alright? And that electron, we could even put down here that it is minus one charge. Okay? And it's got zero mass as far as nucleon numbers go. Okay, then. What are we gonna get on this side? Okay, how did we get that? We have to remember that in beta negative decay. We've got a neutron that is turning into a proton, it's giving up, remember, a neutron is a proton and an electron fused. So it's giving up that electron. And so down here, we are now gonna have two protons. And the nucleon number is conserved, so we had three, we still have three. Alright, and you notice here that two minus a one is, is a one, so. Our charge is conserved. And that is gonna be also an isotope of helium, okay? Here it was an alpha particle. Here it's actual helium. So the answer is A. Okay, next one. We, this time we're given the equation. We wanna know the total number of free neutrons in the product. So how many neutrons must be here for this to be true? Okay, so the nucleon number. Up here to start with is two thirty-six. So on this side, I also have to have two thirty-six, so let's get out the calculator. One thirty-eight plus ninety-five. Two thirty-three. So I've got two thirty-three right here. So that means I've gotta have three more nucleon right there to make this statement true, so answer is B. Which of the following statements is always true for a neutron-induced fission reaction? Okay? Well, let's look at this, the end products always include barium and krypton, is that true? Up here it was. Okay, for this one, alright, but does it always have to have that? Absolutely not, lots of different types of. Um, daughter elements can come out of this, as they're called. The rest mass of the end products is less than what we started with. That is true for sure. Okay, and the reason why is because we get this released energy, so the rest mass. Or the mass, or the mass defect. Okay? Um. The mass defect is not the mass of this, the mass defect is the difference between this and this. Alright, but this has to be less for us to get this released energy. Okay? Um, then the total number of nucleons in the end is less than that of what we started with, absolutely not. Nucleons must be conserved. So that is definitely an obvious wrong one, the answer is A. Okay, couple more. Examples here. Here the answer's A. Alright, and you're just doing what we did up there, so I'm not gonna spend a lot of time on it. Um, it does come out to ninety-one thirty-six. If you add those and that would be krypton. Okay, here. Uh, negative beta particle and gamma ray are emitted. Which of the following is the resulting nucleus? Two fourteen, eighty-two, lead. And on this side, we know that we're gonna get a beta negative. Or an electron. That's got a negative one charge and zero nucleons. And we're also gonna get a gamma particle. Okay, so here's the deal. This is not going to affect either of these numbers. It's not gonna affect charge because it's simply a photon. And it's not gonna affect mass because it doesn't have any mass. Okay? So here, we, this is, this is beta decay again, so a neutron is turning into a proton, proton. So if that is true. We know we're gonna have eighty-three. Okay, so that eliminates these three, so it's either C or D. Since the mass is not affected, we know that the answer is D. Alright? And so we would have on here to complete the reaction. Two fourteen, eighty-three. Okay? There you go, alright, next side. Okay, I threw this one on there because. Um. These units right here, MEV per C, per C squared, what a weird unit. Okay, what does that mean? Let's check it out. Um, we have E equals MC squared. And. If we look at this. This unit is an energy over C squared. So if I rearrange this to make energy over C squared, I get delta M. Is equal to an energy over C squared. So. Here, they're putting MEV. Which does not look anything like an energy, but it means millions of electron volts. Okay, and we know electron volts are energy. And then over C squared. This is a unit of mass. Okay, so be aware of that, that, that shows up from time to time. Okay? Now, we don't need to know anything about lambda particles or any of that to get these answers right. Okay? All we need to know is here we got products. Oh, sorry, reactants. Okay, and here we got products. Trying to write fast. Okay, so. We need to find the mass defect. To find the energy released. So if we're gonna find the ma- the mass defect here. Um. We're simply going to take. The. This one. And then we're gonna subtract these right here. And if you do that, you simply get this. Okay, that's gonna be the energy released. Okay? Number two. These things are moving and then they break apart, the answer is C, you know that from conservation of momentum. Last year that if an internal force, okay, let's say we have two blocks. Sliding together and then a spring pops them apart, okay, and they keep moving. Um, the momentum's gonna be the same direction and. There's no external force, it is an internal force. Okay, so that really goes back to physics one, conservation of momentum. This one, I love this because it throws magnetism in, my favorite. Okay, so we've got a field right here. And we've simply got negative and positive particles being fired into the field. Okay, so you need to use your hand rule to figure this one out. So draw it. Um, put a velocity vector on there, you need to deal with. The force, the B field, and the current. Okay? And remember, current is the flow of positive charge, so the answer is D, once you do your hand rule. Keep doing that until you get it right. Okay? Difficult problem right here. Try it out, try it out with a buddy, your teacher may or may not require it, it just depends. And maybe you'll go over it in class, your teacher does have the key. Alright? Hope you had a great time studying modern physics two, the nucleus.